All right, we are now at our 2021-22 Annual Financial Audit Report from Plant Moran. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Lazarus and members, trustees of the board. Ms. Minnick and our auditors are coming to join us on the stage this evening. And the team is going to get some slides up. Trustees, it's that time, right before Thanksgiving, when every year we attend to our annual audit of the organization. Trustees, you do have the physical copies with you. It's one of the very few times of the year that we provide you the physical copies, but you also, everyone in the audience has them on board dots as well. So you have all of the information that you need. Ms. Osinski or Mr. Clulley, I'm going to share just a brief intro and then we'll do our introduction. We have with us Ms. Minnick and members of our finance team are watching or here. And then we also have our lead auditor, Jennifer Chambers, and members of her team that we'll introduce in just a moment. I want to thank Ms. Minnick and our finance team for all of the work to prepare for this audit. Folks see this around Thanksgiving every year and they don't realize that audit time is 365 days a year. And particularly, it starts in the summer, right after graduations. Usually is when I see those folks start rolling in to support us. So it is a very significant and in-depth process. Trustees, as we think about 21-22, I don't want to reactivate any trauma for anyone at this table or folks who are out there with us, but it was quite a year. And we had clear direction from our parents and our community and among ourselves, and these were the priorities. Health and safety, number one. Maintain our AAPS schools as fully open. That was their number one request. And then also academic and social emotional support for our students so that they can make a robust recovery from the time away during the pandemic. And then whatever you do, please get us quality staff and make sure we attract and retain them. Of course, we never let up on all of the COVID mitigation. And trustees, I want to thank you. You supported every effort on all of these buckets of work. Air ventilation, COVID response team, additional nurses, testing, clinics, vaccines, and on down the line. If we click on the link there, I just want to remind folks who may be watching that every detail of our community engagement is here. And through thousands of responses from our parents, they all resonated to these five areas of priority. So if you click there and go to the top link, if you would, the top tab, there we go, you can see that our ongoing work, and we have descriptions there, are in those four key and critical areas. Now, I want to caution people, when you go there and look at the receipts or the reimbursement from the state, you don't see the full plan because those reimbursements are just for the money that we spent in particular areas where the state gave us permission to apply for reimbursement. So if you look ahead then to the next slide, we'll just take a look at, you know, we know we generally have a $300 million general fund budget, about $71 million in capital bond and sinking fund. And then this past year, an additional $25 million in federal support monies. And people might say, in fact, I appreciated trustee Gaynor and I had an interaction the other day. It's like, can we just think about what that was? You know, and how is it that we have managed our fund balance? How did that all add up? Just a few spotlights on the investments we made in achieving our priorities. You can see that that substitute staff ran around $8.6 million, well over double of any prior year. And we made that investment to keep our classrooms open. Transportation increases. Trustees, I appreciated your support. We did a lot with transportation to keep the buses on the roads and to keep drivers behind the wheel. Custodial, the DX testing that we did for many months, every week. I'm so proud that the trustees supported a 2% enhancement for all staff, just under $3 million on that. Across the board, hourly workers. And trustees, it's something that you all have wanted to do for many years. And I'm so proud that we were finally able to do it, and we need to do more. But we moved up that minimum, that starting wage on hourly employees, particularly those in employee groups, to $1,650. And then Ms. Minnick did the work to align those hourly rates for experienced workers up from that $650 point, $1,650 point. Enhancements for critical needs staff. We were having a hard time, as every district was, and so we put enhancements in. We continued to offer the virtual program throughout 21-22. Trustees, you will recall, we served several hundred families in that virtual program throughout the 21-22 school year. So that was the cost of an additional school program. And then finally, I appreciated this reminder yesterday, our additional learning sessions in the summer. And we've done now three summers of intensive learning to help students with their recovery. So when you think about that, you can see that very quickly we get to 20, you know, almost 20 million. Just doing a few of the highlights. And trustees, you know, there's a whole lot more that we did over this previous year. We invested heavily in order to achieve our goals. We aligned the priorities that our parents, our students, and our staff asked us for and that you all supported and agreed to. We aligned the funding to those priorities. Our budget, we know, is a spending plan. The audit is the reconciliation of how the organization did against the spending plan. And so tonight, it is my honor to introduce Ms. Jill Minnick and to publicly, I'm sorry, I don't know why I get emotional, but to publicly thank her. And I don't know if you realize this, but she carried a spreadsheet with her at all times last year. And in every crisis management meeting, whatever we said, whether it was, oh, do some more testing, or Ms. Bacalaur, can you run a COVID team into that school? Or where are the substitutes? She would just add it to the spreadsheet. And the fact that we are settling an audit this evening, just a few pennies off of where we thought we would be, to me is a miracle, but more importantly, is a tribute to your hard work. And I just want to thank you for that. Very good. All right, with that, we'll get about the business of the audit. Yes? Okay. And you will introduce, because I didn't get all the team members.
Well, thank you, Dr. Swift, for that wonderful introduction. I appreciate your gratitude, but really, it's the work of the entire district, all the budget managers across the district managing their budgets every day. And of course, members of all teams, our finance department, our directors in finance, particularly assisted by, we had a contracted staffer this year. But it was quite a year. And thank you for setting the table and providing some context for this year's audit. But thank you so much. Good evening, trustees and community. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you the outcomes and the results of the fiscal year, school year 21-22 financial audit. So with me this evening to present their work and the outcomes of the audit are members of the Plant Moran External Audit Team, led by Jennifer Chambers, senior partner on the engagement, assisted by Anthony Sazanowski, senior manager, and of course, a team of auditors that conducted the audit as well. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers, if you forgive me, I neglected to thank the finance committee, who have done this work every month right alongside us. And that's Chair Kara Harrow and President Lazarus. They were the hardest working committee because finance committee never took a minute off. They had to show up all the time and figure, help us figure these finances out. So thank you, trustees.
So thank you to the Board of Education for having us here tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2022 audit. Hopefully, we'll get our slides queued up here while that is coming up. Before we get into the detailed information and the financial information, I did want to discuss the deliverables that you would have received in your board packet from us. You should have received three items in the board packet in advance. The basic financial statements, which are labeled financial report, the federal programs audit, and the letter entitled Report to the Board of Education.
Can you move the slide along, please?
All districts in the state of Michigan are required to have an annual audit. As a result of the audit work that we performed, we have rendered an unmodified opinion, which is referred to as a clean opinion as well, on both the financial statements and federal award reports. This is the highest form of assurance that we as auditors can provide, that the financial information is free of material misstatement and in compliance with the federal program rules. As part of our audit procedures, the district was also subjected to bond compliance requirements and sinking fund compliance requirements, and our audit procedures included valuation of that. And we did not identify any compliance issues associated with those costs selected for testing. Specifically related to the audit of the federal programs, we had no findings or question costs. And this is impressive, given the $41.5 million of federal dollars received. As part of the federal programs audit, we as the auditors select specific programs to be tested for compliance annually. The four programs that we tested this year was the Education Stabilization Fund, which includes those ESER funds, the Emergency Connectivity Fund, Title I, and Head Start. And all were found to be in compliance with the federal regulations. So moving on, we have performed the audit of the district's financial statements in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and in accordance with government auditing standards. The district, and more specifically, the finance department, is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with these accounting principles. And then the auditor's responsibility is to render an opinion on those financial statements. In addition, as part of the deliverables that I mentioned at the beginning, the one entitled Report to the Board of Education is where there is really a qualitative summary of the results of the audit that accompanies the audit opinions that are included in those other two deliverables. Here, we wanted to highlight a few of those areas that are covered in that audit or in that report, including the fact that we had no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no disagreements with administration. We did not identify any audit adjustments or identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. And I mentioned previously that there was also no findings or question costs. So before we get into the graphical presentation of the numbers, we did just want to cover some highlights and some challenges of the year from a very high-level financial perspective. So this year, there was about $58.5 million in current-year capital investments from your outstanding bond issues, including $52.5 million from the 2019 bond program and the balance from the 2018 technology and 2015 building and site bonds. In addition, the sinking fund millage, supported by the community, continues to be a critical element to the overall capital repair needs of the district, with about $12.6 million in current-year investments from this fund. And this is impactful because having a sinking fund such as this aids and eases the burden that the general fund would bear to address these capital repair needs in the absence of having this specific millage. Additionally, the district, similar to all districts in the state and across the country, had significant ESER COVID-19 emergency response grant funding. And this year, that totaled about $25.5 million. We have some additional details on that further in the program, which really went directly to help the health and safety of students and staff. So along with these highlights, the district also continues to address various challenges. As has been discussed, the impact of the pandemic really impacted all facets of the district, from learning challenges to additional costs incurred to equip the buildings for the safe return to in-classroom learning. And we see those investments coming through in the numbers that we audit. A priority on health and wellness and mitigation efforts. And the district continues to balance making investments in staff and services while having a keen focus on overall fiscal responsibility and working within your current funding structure. And then continuing to be mindful of the impact and taking care of the one-time grant funding, these emergency response grants, that is not part of the overall permanent funding structure. And that will be a challenge as you look for your long-term planning on expenditures. So now we can move into the first graphical numerical slide that we have. This graph shows the general fund revenue and expenditures. It starts with the original approved budget from June of 2021, that's in blue, the amended June 2022 budget in orange, and then the actual audited results in gold. The original budget that was approved in June of 2021 was done so in advance of the state adopting its budget, which really sets forth what the funding is for individual districts. And so it's important to know that that was done in advance of knowing really what funding from a large source you were going to receive. And that provides the impact then for the budget amendments that occur during the year. It should be noted, however, that all of these numbers are marked with additional funding provided by the state of Michigan for the retirement system, which is required to be paid directly back. So we've kind of earmarked this $23 million, which is the current year amount that was received. This is additional funding to help ease the cash flow burden associated with paying into the retirement system. But we draw your attention to this here on this graph because it is not a guaranteed revenue source. And in the absence of that, the district would still bear the responsibility of those expenditures. So it's important to just keep an eye on what that revenue would be in the absence of that $23 million. So just looking at the actual totals, actual revenue was $293 million in total. Again, that's in the gold bar. And then your actual expenditures were $295.5 million. And now we can move on to the next slide, and we can talk a little bit more about budget versus actual results. So this graph continues to look at budget versus actual and really walks you through from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, what was the impact on fund balance? So we start with the fund balance as of June 30, 2021, with the current revenue as per the amended budget compared to actual results. Expenditures, which then takes you down to the net change in fund balance. And again, looking at it in terms of what did, where did you expect you were going to end the year versus where did you actually end the year? What's important to note is on the far right-hand side, we have the variance from a percentage perspective. Because when we're looking at dollars managed to this degree, sometimes it's helpful to just have those different metrics to put things in perspective. So from a revenue perspective, budgeted revenue came in just slightly short of plan at 0.15% variance, and expenditures was 0.52% off. So said differently, from an expenditures perspective, if you planned to spend $100, you would have been off 0.52. So this is very, very close to what was projected. At the bottom of the slide, we do provide a couple of additional metrics, the first being the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and that amount this year is 6.7%. We have some additional slides related to this metric. We also will call out the fund balance as a percentage of revenue, also at 6.7%. And then equating the fund balance, which is $19.7 million at June 30, 2022, in terms of days of operation. So if the district were to cease receiving revenue, you could continue to operate for 24 days with the fund balance that you have at the end of the year. So now we thought it would be helpful to just look at general fund, fund balance comparatively over a 10-year history. This just gives you some perspective on how fund balance has changed over the years. And in addition to the actual dollar amounts of fund balance, we've provided the percentage of expenditures metric at the bottom of the graph, again, for reference. From a fund balance perspective in general, the importance of fund balance really comes into play to provide the opportunity and ability to manage from a cash flow perspective primarily. There are two months during the year, the school districts do not receive revenue. And so one area in particular where fund balance can be helpful is easing the cash flow burden during those periods. Fund balance also allows districts to be able to be responsive to a variety of challenges that come our way without having to make very quick reactive decisions and still continue to be able to move forward on your overall long-term plan. So paired with that graph that we just looked at from a fund balance perspective, the graph that's on the screen now continues to look at that 10-year period of fund balance, but really now, instead of the bar chart with the actual numbers, we're seeing what the trend has been visually for that metric of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So as you can see, starting back in 2013, that was at about 4.7%. And then through the time period presented to where we are today, that number is now at 6.7%. The board has a policy or a target of fund balance that it should range between 6% and 15%, which is why those areas are covered and highlighted on the graph. And as you can see, over the last several years, while the metric has varied, generally stable. You know, several years ago, at about 7.2% to 6.7% now, has been generally consistent over the last several years. And then we have a couple more slides on general fund fund balance, and then I'll turn it over to Anthony. But here, we're taking a look at general fund from a fund balance indicators perspective. So again, just trying to put some context around what does fund balance mean and what are some different target levels perhaps from a fund balance perspective? So here on the graph, we have four primary data points to consider here. The first is the, in the orange bar, shows the fund balance level where that early warning legislation measure kicks in, or that's the 5% of revenue as an established kind of baseline from a state perspective. If we were to dip below that, there would be additional actions the district would have to take in response to that to report to the state. The next level shows what the district's actual fund balance is as of June 30, 2022, at 6.7% of expenditures or $19.7 million. Working your way up, there is the next threshold of a 15% fund balance target. This target is generally recommended by the Michigan School Business Officials as one fund balance consideration target to have what's considered perhaps an appropriate or healthy fund balance. That's their perspective. So if you were to have a 15% fund balance, that number would mean you would have $44.3 million of fund balance. And then finally, the 2021 statewide average for fund balance came in at 19.3%. That would equate to about $57 million for Ann Arbor Public Schools from a fund balance perspective if you were at that level. So again, this is really just provided for context and reference. And then the final slide that we have on fund balance in particular is again, kind of continuing to look historically to provide that context. This graph provides the singular net change in each of the years presented of fund balance. So for example, on the far right, in 2022, the district utilized fund balance of about $2.5 million. And as you can see on the graph, fund balance increases and decreases, just given what's going on in each individual year, different dynamics and responding, you know, to different things that the district's addressing. For certain years presented, and those are the ones labeled with the letters and the specific notes, there were one-time funding sources that would have contributed to some of the fluctuations you're seeing in fund balance. So we just call that out from a historical perspective again, just kind of understand how fund balance ebbs and flows throughout the years, just given what you are currently managing. So at this point, I will turn it over to Anthony. He's going to take us into some more specifics around revenue and expenditures.
This graph depicts general fund revenue broken down by source. The district had total revenue and other financing sources this year of approximately $293 million. The greatest source of revenue for the general fund is from the foundation allowance at approximately 58%. As you are aware, the two main components affecting the foundation revenue is enrollment, which you have some control over by your ability to attract and retain students to the district. And the other piece of that is the state allocation of the foundation allowance, of which you have absolutely no control over from a practical purpose. 22% of the revenue is received from other sources such as state categorical revenues, federal grants, special education funding received from the state and other local revenue sources. 8% of the total revenue is the pass-through funding, the 147(c) money that Jennifer was just explaining, which is the statewide mandated retirement program, where you get the cash in, and then you immediately cut a check and put it right back into the retirement system. And then lastly, 12% is from the county for special education costs. So a key component to the funding from the state is the per pupil foundation allowance. So we've assembled a summary here to show you what has occurred with this funding over a period of years. As can be seen here on the graph, since the $470 cut per pupil in 2012, the increases have been nominal at best as it relates to the foundation amounts that the Board of Education can decide how to spend. Increases since 2012 have been pretty paltry. They've ranged from $0 back in the, you know, the late or the early teens there to $120 per pupil. More recently, the foundation allowance increases have picked up a bit. And in 2022, the foundation allowance was increased to $9,701 per pupil, and looking prospectively, has increased to a little over $10,000, which will, for the first time in 14 years, surpass the amount from 2008, 2009, which I think is a pretty powerful reminder of what our, you know, the impact the economy has had on Michigan and school education and funding. This next slide is to piggyback off the prior slide I mentioned. And so when thinking about the revenue that the district receives through the foundation allowance, this is directly impacted by the enrollment of the district each year, the student enrollment. So this slide shows the enrollment based on the fall FTE count, fall FTE count for each year. As you can see, enrollment changes were relatively consistent from 2013 and increasing through 2019, and then from 2020 through 2022 decreased slightly. Just to note that this figure, that the figure is presented is for all students for which Ann Arbor received the foundation allowance and are included in the accounts which are audited by the ISD. As noted in the previous graph, the district received a significant influx of emergency relief and response federal grant funding over the last several years. So this graph provides an illustration of that time horizon in which these emergency COVID-related grants have affected the district, kind of broken out by the various buckets and types of federal funding related to the COVID-19 emergency. So just to give you a bit of direction here, the individual COVID-related grants are listed on the left-hand side. The amount depicted in blue is the known formal awarded amounts. The amount shown in orange represent the expenditures expended to date, so going back to the beginning of when these programs were granted to the district. You know, while it's been a significant benefit to the district to receive these funds, the utilization of these has required a deliberate plan in order to ensure its cost, and ultimately, the burden of the long-term cost structure for the district incorporates that these are truly one-time costs. I think the biggest thing to note on this slide is there is only approximately $80,000 left of COVID-19-related emergency federal grant funding, essentially inferring that you've spent all your federal money related to the COVID-19 grants, and there will not be any additional funding going forward. So this next slide analyzes the general fund expenditures broken down by the type of expenditure. So the total expenditure- So the total expenditure is approximated 90, $295.6 million. And of that total, the combined salaries and benefits and retirement pass-through funding represented a little over 237, almost $238 million, meaning approximately 81% of your total general fund expenditures are expended on salaries and benefits for district employees. As a reminder, the $23 million of MIPSers pass-through amounts or amounts received revenue by the state, we talked about that earlier. 16% relates to purchase services such as edge of staff and other people-related costs, technology, transportation, maintenance, custodial, et cetera. And the majority of this $47 million is HR and other people-related costs. And then 3% relates to supplies and materials, such as, you know, many of the utility costs of the district. And then just under 1% was every, everything else that the district expended. So breaking that $237 million, $238 million down a little bit further, this is going to break out salaries and benefits into primarily three categories. So salaries and wages of approximately $140 million or 59% make up this total, which is expected as the major, majority of the overall cost in the total salaries and benefits bucket. Additionally, total contributions to MIPSers represented about $61 million or 26% of this total $238 million number. Then healthcare-related costs represented a little under $25 million. We'll talk a little bit about both these items in, in the coming slides. So continuing to look at that salaries and benefits number, the $238 million, this slide breaks it down by function or, or really where the areas that these costs are incurred. So one thing to note is that these are state mandated classifications based on the standardized State of Michigan Chart of Accounts, and that's what we audit to. And the district is required to classify in the audit report, too. So of the $238 million in costs in this category, the most significant area in which these costs are incurred is within the instructional and instructional support at approximately 87% and school leadership approximately 7%, inferring that nearly 200, of the nearly $238 million spent on salaries and benefits, 94% of that is going directly into schools and school-based personnel, really reflecting a priority on classrooms and student, you know, the students and the student buildings. As you can see, the teal component and red component, you know, represent that 94%. And again, just reemphasizing that this is what affects the student experience. This graph here highlights the eight-year trend of the MIPSers or retirement expenditures for the district. As a reminder, all districts that have collecting bargaining agreements are mandated to participate in that statewide mandated or statewide retirement system. The district has no input on contribution rates, investments for the system and other items, such as the investments that the MIPSers program are selecting. They are told what their annual, annual contribution rates will be. But as you can see, the cost has been steadily increasing over the prior eight years, leveling off slightly in 2020 and then increasing again in, in the last fiscal year here. And it's important to note that both the district and its employees have to contribute into this plan. But what we're showing here and what we're auditing as it relates to this slide, just shows the amounts contributed by the district. So the total costs for 2022, fiscal year 2022, include the additional $23 million of MIPSers expense for which you receive the revenue to offset. And just important to note, we've been talking a lot about this 147(c)(money) or the retirement money from the state. This money did not exist prior to 2013, which is kind of why we, we picked the state range for the slide deck here. So let's look at another large expenditure for the district with, which is the healthcare or health-related insurance cost. So again, this shows the eight-year trend in, in health costs for the district. And another important note, while both employees and the district are required to contribute to health insurance-related costs, this slide is just showing the costs that are coming out of pocket to the district. And there's not too much else I wanted to call out there, except this was the historical trend of health insurance-related costs. So bringing it all back together, so we talked about revenue and expenditures, break down the details. And we really wanted to just show that general fund as a percentage of expenditures slide again, and really encourage the district to just continue to monitor fund balance, particularly as it relates to general fund expenditures as well, as, you know, your savings are only as good as what your, your costs are. And as you look, look to the future, just again, as a reminder, to continue to monitor and your fund balance. So this slide shows the Ann Arbor Public Schools' general fund balance as of June 30, 2022, compared to other school districts as of June 30, 2021. The data for the other school districts, many other school districts here, which I'll talk about, was not available yet for June 30, 2022. But of course, we do have Ann Arbor's fund balance as of the end of this past year. So the slide is comparing the Ann Arbor School Districts. It's all general fund as a percentage of, uh, general fund expenditures. So in blue, you'll note other districts in the Washington ISD is within the same intermediate school district and where their fund balance stands as a percentage of expenditures. In the red set of bars, you'll see other kind of self-selected high-performing districts that the district will sometimes reference or compare itself to. And then the last set is the purple set of bars, which are just again, demographically comparable districts, again, showing where their fund balance is as a percentage of, of expenditures. And I'll pass it back to Jennifer.
So as we wrap up the presentation, we did just want to highlight some of the key takeaways. From what we've observed, the district continues to operate fiscally responsibly, as evidenced by our clean opinion, again, the highest opinion that a school district can receive, and through the continual monitoring of the monthly financial activity. Looking forward, cost containment and improved efficiencies will continue to be a focal point for you in order to continue to, to yield positive financial results and stability. The board and administration has continued its commitment to oversee the district for long-term viability. And especially in these recent years, you know, sustained going through a tremendously challenging time. And so keeping your eye future-focused as it relates to, to the financial information, at least from our viewpoint, is, is critically important. And you've invested in one-time federal and state funds. You've taken those funds and really put a focus on the health and wellness of students and staff and focused on competitive pay. As we look forward for, for Ann Arbor, as well as future developments in the overall school environment, we do want to just, again, continue to, to suggest certain areas to monitor, particularly looking at fund balance levels, keeping your eye on those retirement rates that we talked about and how significant of an expenditure that is, the, the state of the state and, and how, you know, state funding, state, state aid funding plays out, the economy, the impact of, of the political arena. So these are all areas that you already monitor and keep a close eye on. And, and our recommendation would just be to continue to do so. And then here, we've just got, again, some continued takeaways and, and themes as we, as we close out this audit year. Really continuing to do the things that have been the priority for the district, a number of those that have been mentioned at, at the onset and, and really throughout the presentation. But just continuing to build fund equity to ensure sustainability of the organization, continuing to innovate, continuing to evaluate recurring expenditures and the long-term impact of those. And of course, you know, first and foremost, keeping the health and safety of students and staff top of mind. So with that, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Swift. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jennifer and Anthony, for the audit report. This is a time when I just want to thank our entire Ann Arbor Public Schools team, our teachers and staff, support staff and leaders continue to deliver and serve children every day. So that's what makes the investment worthwhile is that we get that outcome of our children growing and learning and thriving. I want to thank this Board of Education for all of your support this past year. These fund balances don't happen by accident. They happen because you all are making decisions that need to be made. And sometimes that's happy stuff, and sometimes it's not. So I appreciate your leadership in looking at short, medium and long-term sustainability and strength for the organization. I just want to give a shout out in our gratitude to our parents and community, our students. We have this asset of our public schools in Ann Arbor, and they exist because we all work together. We might not always agree on every decision we make, but we come together and we work together with a focus on students. And it's our funding and remaining strong fiscally that allows us to be able to continue to do that. So Jennifer and Anthony, thank you for putting our organization to the test. Ms. Minnick and your finance team, thank you for getting us ready for the test.
Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer and Jill, Anthony and Jill. Before this report, I know I mentioned earlier in our committee meeting that when you say auditors are coming in, everybody gets a little quiet. But we really do look at you as a partner in our district. And I know Ms. Minnick and her team look at you very strongly as a partner. And we have worked very hard to keep our district strong financially. I know it's been tough. We have a lot of, um, uh, community values that we cherish. And it has guided us through this pandemic. And it shows in this budget and this audit. So I'm very happy that it came out clean and we are ready to move on. So I just hope that, I will not be here on this board, but I, and Trustee Kelly and Trustee Johnson will not be. But I just, um, I just adhere that and suggest that future trustees that are going to be sitting at this table be very mindful of being consistent and having sustainable expenses and budgets in mind. That is the most important thing to keep this district strong. Our fund balance is not as high as these other districts that we have chosen to compare ourselves to. But there's a big story behind that. So we choose to commit to our community and to our community's values to be open, to keep our, to address our students' needs. And sometimes that requires us to dip into that fund balance. But we are strong. Thank you and appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Minnick.
Thank you.